February tenth, two thousand and twenty-four Select Board Meeting. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, and welcome. We have a scheduled appointment this evening of the Fire Chief, Jason Piveros, to with the Ward of Firefighter EMT Achievement Awards. Jason, Chief.
First, I'd like to thank the Board for having us tonight. You know, we did this last year, and I think it's great to have you be able to have the Board meet all the firefighters who serve the community. I forget that we packed the room probably over the fire capacity every year, but it's great to see everyone here, and you know, for me, it's important to see all the families here. You know, no one in this field has a successful career without family support. And now, this is, I think, the third time we've done this, and every single time we have to, you know, we're not able to get everyone in the room, and I think that that just shows how much support our firefighters have from their families. So I'd like to give all the family members a... So exciting night tonight. We have some new members of, not new members, but we have some members who have been promoted to full-time firefighters, so I'd like to call them forward. Firefighter Brian Musial and firefighter Dan McPherson. So what's great about about these two hires is that they came from within the system. They both started as call firefighters. Brian has eight years on the call department. Dan has over five years on the call department. They they love this town. They grew up in this town. They knew what they had to do to achieve their goal of becoming full-time firefighters. They both went to paramedic school. They went to the the Fire Academy. They they checked all the boxes. And you know, what was interesting, when they when they both finally became paramedics, because our department only hires paramedics, I didn't have any openings at that time, coincidentally. And I said to both of them, I said, you guys have, you know, you have your paramedic now. You got all your certifications. Unfortunately, we don't have openings, but tell me where you want to go. You know, every single department in this area is hiring, and I'm more than happy to make a phone call for you, and you can almost pick where you want to be. And both of them said, we don't want to be anywhere else. We just want to be here. And they they waited until we had openings, and I think that speaks to how much they care about the town and, you know, how important it was to be part of this department. So we're happy to have them now as full-time career firefighters. So if I could ask the town clerk to administer the oath?
Sure.
I, Brian Musial.
Do songs.
Fairly faithfully and impartially. Discharge and perform. The duties incumbent upon me. As a duly appointed firefighter, paramedic.
As a duly appointed firefighter, paramedic.
For the Pembroke Fire Department. In accordance with the bylaws of the town.
In accordance with the bylaws of the town.
The laws of the criminal law of Massachusetts.
The laws of the criminal law of Massachusetts.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
Now, I'd like to invite Brian's Brian's mom up and Kelly, I believe it is, and Dan's dad, Scott, to pin your badge. We should always do a dry run on this because it's more challenging than it looks. Next, we have, you guys can have... Next, we have our Years of Service Awards. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts recognizes firefighters who have over twenty years of active service. So along with a certificate from the Fire Service Commission, we have a pin that they'll wear on their uniform. The first one is twenty years of recognition. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts Fire Service Commission presents the Massachusetts Firefighter Service Award to firefighter Daniel Smith. Next, also receiving the twenty-year award is firefighter Andrew Scanlon. Also receiving the twenty-year award is Captain David Barkowski. Next, we have thirty-year award. This is the thirty-year Call Firefighter Award. Commonwealth of Massachusetts Fire Service Commission presents the Massachusetts Firefighter Service Award to Call Firefighter Brian Martinowski. And finally, last but certainly not least, this is our senior career firefighter who's been with the department for thirty years, Captain Michael Davis. Finally, we have three call members of the department that are retiring tonight, all with more than thirty years of of service. I think it's important, you know, to recognize that these, they're, the Call Firefighters service, they're not here for, they were never here for the money. They were never, they, just a passion for the job, a love for the community, and, you know, just enjoying serving the community and doing this this job. So certainly, they, when they entered, the fire service looked much different than it does today. We've evolved and continue to evolve, but they've really stuck with it for many, many years, and we are very grateful for their service. So first firefighter I'd like to call up is firefighter Brian Martinowski. And each firefighter is presented with their retirement badge. Next, with thirty-two years of service is firefighter Vicky Walekis. And finally, not certainly, last but not least, with thirty-seven years of service to the town is firefighter William Kelly. So that concludes the awards tonight. I'd like to, once again, thank you for having us tonight and thank all the families who took the time. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
I'd like to say a thank you, Chief, and thank you to the entire department, and especially thank you to the family for supporting them. Congratulations to all of you. All right. Thank you. So we're going to go back to our agenda. Thank you all for attending this evening. We have seven-thirty appointment, but it's not quite that time yet, so we'll skip down. Seven forty, we have an appointment as well, so we'll skip down to give them a chance to come here. We'll take some board action. I would like to appoint Linda Osborne and Laura DeYoung to the Historic District Commission. What is the pleasure of the meeting?
Second.
I'm just made second, there's a ready discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve the minutes of December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I move to approve the minutes of December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'm most made second, there's a ready discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Bill, are you ready for your town management's report?
Sure.
Okay.
I have a few things this evening. Going to go ahead and start. Two things, one tomorrow we have, one next Thursday, fireworks site, we have a fair schedule. First one is tomorrow, January eleventh at seven p.m., Hanover High School. Correspondent with the town, we're in there today, we're expecting a full house there tomorrow night, so. We don't have to attend in search of anything. One, two, I'm sure, if you have questions about that process, you certainly can attend this one. This is really one of the, probably only two meetings, residents are going to be able to ask questions. So if residents want to ask questions, please go to Hanover tomorrow night, or the second meeting will be next Thursday, the eighteenth, at seven p.m. at the Hanson Middle School Auditorium. You know, Pembroke, we're we're there because we're downstream from it, but we don't, we don't physically border the actual site. Both, both Hanson and Hanover do. They have properties that are right there and directly impacted by the process, so there's a, there's a bunch of literature out there if someone wants to review that. We've posted it. I've emailed it to several people. And again, you're not required to attend, but if you want to, or if you have questions, if you're a resident or any board member, please feel free to attend. So second item I have is a quick discussion on, well, it's not so quick, a discussion on the budget. The town's budget is not great. We are working very hard to make sure that we present to you on February seventh a balanced budget. Some concerns we have, and I'm going to go ahead and share those, are the the state budget and where the state and the Commonwealth are going. They released last, the end of last week that for the sixth consecutive month, they've missed their target revenue numbers. December is a key month, November and December, but December is a very key month because it's when all of your bigger excise tax stuff, business, corporate, they're making that quarterly payment in in December, and it's a big one. So I have some concerns about that. They missed the target by three and a half percent in December, ten point nine percent in November, and the July through, July through October are all in the low force for an accumulant number of about four point one percent there, so.
So I heard in excess of three hundred million dollars that they'll be looking to cut right now for about a billion dollars total in hold. What have you heard?
That's that's pretty accurate. That's pretty much just under a billion. The governor has said she will be doing no nine-C cuts, which means she's going to have to find some cuts within her own budget or use reserve funds to fill that gap. We don't know where that's at. I know that the FY twenty-five budget is due from the governor on January twenty-fourth, and we expect to, that will give us some indications of where they're going to go. Concerns me that that if they don't cut budgets, that FY twenty-five, the FY twenty-five budget will be pretty dramatic cuts and potentially in local aid. So I have some serious concerns about that, so we're being very conservative.
We went through some nine-C cuts in about two thousand and nine or so.
Two thousand and nine and two thousand and sixteen, yes.
And it was devastating for the town. So if we have to, we went from such a surplus in the in the government revenues that they had to actually give money back from a clause in the law just a couple of years ago, and now the revenues have dried up a little bit, but I suspect it's more about spending than it is about the revenue, even though the revenues are down. So, you know, just small example, the governor just made out of whole cloth a position for our state representative, Josh Cutler. Poof, there's a job. Let's spend the money on it. Secondly, the governor, I believe they appropriated two hundred and fifty million dollars to house the illegal migrants that are being foisted upon the state of Massachusetts. Even more, okay? So it's curious. The state of Massachusetts has a budget deficit that's almost equal to what we're paying for to house the migrants, but yet it's not the, but that's not correlated according to the governor. Curious, interesting. Untrue.
The, those two numbers are very, very close, as a matter of fact.
Agreed.
Yeah, I just wanted the Board to be aware, we're we're working very hard to get there. Department heads or, pardon me, you may hear from some, they're frustrated, and I get it, I'm frustrated too, but we can't spend money we don't have, so, you know, we're, we'll be rolling that budget out on February seventh, but I wanted to start to give you in advisory next week, an indication of, you know, where we are, so.
So why, if you're done with it, do you have more?
I have one more item.
I do have something for you, so let me figure it, please.
Okay. Oh, it's just an update on two, two construction updates. Community Center is really coming along. The parking lot lights should be done this week. You can see that the door is up, the front door, it's given some color to a very white building. They've suspended site work for the winter. They'll pick that back up the first part of March. Just the winter conditions are just too difficult to do that, so. On track to to still open in the first of May, so some good news there.
Why are the lights always on inside?
They're, they're still using construction lights. They haven't rolled over. The switchgear just shipped, should be here soon. So as soon as they get the switchgear up, then we can start to bring light. They're, they're construction lights. They're not on the switches, they're not the, the actual lights, so.
That pounding up front still concerns me.
Yeah, we're working.
It is not percolating.
We are, we are working that. I talked to the engineers on Tuesday, yesterday. We'll see what happens.
Can they do a soil test there?
If it, we did before.
Did they?
It was supposedly really good. If it doesn't, we'll just, we'll have to do some, some type of drain.
I know, the grading's not there yet, I understand.
The final grades aren't there. The final grades aren't even close right now, so lots of work to be done there still. One note that the Board should be aware of, I was notified by the G C that we were planning to keep the gazebo. I'm going to ask the building inspector to go and inspect it because there's a, a large separation in the beams, so there's some, some issues going on there. Whether we can repair it or not, I'll update the Board at your next meeting.
You talking about the ban stand?
The gazebo, yeah, ban stand, gazebo, whatever. We've been calling it a gazebo, but ban stand, yeah. So we were planning to keep that. They were finishing up running the new electricity because we're not using, we're using electricity off the same grid, and they noticed some issues there, so the Board should be aware of that.
So it's possible to make a repair and doesn't affect anything?
We don't know yet. Yeah, yeah, we certainly have.
Just so, so you go, that's, it's going to be a lot of the same people that are library advocates, were advocates to have that building constructed, so you're going to have the same people pushing back if that gets demolished. And you know the people I'm talking about?
Yep.
Okay.
The goal would not be to demolish it, and if we do demolish it, we would likely replace it.
Would like what, I'm sorry?
We'd likely replace it. If we have to demo it, we don't want to because of the construction, because of what it is, but if it, if it isn't up to code and is dangerous, we won't have a choice. The number one goal is to repair.
And we would discuss that, what that would look like before that goes into...
Well, if it's, if they condemn it, it's condemned, and we'll just rope it off and make sure no one uses it, and then determine the next steps at that point.
Okay, I do have something for you. One of the things was about the landscaping and civil work out front to contain that water and the underground filtration system that will likely be needed there. Want to make sure that that's captured before we overburden it, so we don't have to dig it twice, right?
Right.
But in, I was reading the, the O A C meeting minutes, so the C of O is not due to be, is is not due to mid-May. The T C O is coming before that in April, so what does that do for town meeting and elections in that building?
We anticipate we'll probably have occupancy prior to that. The big, the big, big change in mid-May was the switchgear, switchgear ship, so that, that...
And the electrician is not going to try to bypass that to get the...
We are not commissioning, so it was just so close, there's no need to do it. With a delay in the shipgear until April, we had planned that plan. We are not doing that plan now. There's no need to do that plan now. The switchgear will go in, and then we'll, we'll have everything ready to roll, so.
Do you have anything else, Bill?
Nope. Well, yeah, one, one more item, and that's the herring run. That, that project is having major issues with all the waterfall, so we are monitoring it. I'm having a concrete test to make sure, make sure everything is ready. The castings are all ready to pick up and set, but you have all the little footings and stuff that have to be in before you put those castings in, so.
And the water flow has increased in the last couple of days.
It's unbelievable. And, and, you know, the, the folks that are experts in town, I met earlier today with Gene Fumini, and he says, Bill, you got three days before you hit the maximum flow there. So hits not good. It is, it is...
It's raining last night.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, I, I just want everybody to be aware that we're on it. We're making sure that it's done. The engineers have been instructed to make sure that there are no issues, so we don't set concrete on foundations that are useless. I don't think that, they've been in for a bit now, but the, certainly the, the bypass failed. The water's running through there, so, and we all know what water can do, so that, that's all I had.
You did make the Grand Canyon.
Yeah, it's true.
Does anyone have anything for the town manager tonight?
Do we have an update on lagging?
On lagging, such as, I'm meeting with the engineers next week, so your next meeting, I should have, I'm meeting with them on the eighteenth.
Anything further? If not, we'll move on. Are there any liaison updates this evening? Yeah, go ahead.
I have one for the VOTAC committee, actually. So we've met a couple times. I know everybody's been very interested to see what's been going on. So Tom Hickey, who's the principal of the Socia VOTAC, is having a building committee meeting on January seventeenth. At the seventeenth meeting, he should have better ballpark numbers on remodel of the building, or if they're going to just have a new building built. Our meet, our committee will then meet again late January or early February, where we'll actually have those numbers to work with. Tom Hickey is supposed to attend the meeting, hopefully to answer some questions and give the updates himself, and then we should be meeting, I think I just said that, early January, early, late January, early February. So right around then, we'll probably have a better update to be able to share with everybody with some more definitive numbers, and so I figured I could give an update perhaps in that first February meeting here, if that would work.
Sure. Do you have anything else?
Not any liaison updates, no.
Okay, yeah, I have something, Mr. Chairman. The Pembroke Chamber of Commerce was able to do a ribbon cutting over at Hoben Mac Elementary because the kids opened a, a store for them to learn how to do math and selling and learning this kind of responsibility. It was a wonderful time. Tracy was there, Allison was there, a school community member, and the kids had a real good time of understanding and just enjoyed doing that. So I would like to know that Hoben Mac Elementary has a school store that's just opened, and they're an official member of the Pembroke Chamber.
Excellent. Very good. Are there any further liaison updates?
Yes, I've got some updates for the master plan, quite a few, actually. So we've got a, another master plan committee meeting tomorrow at six-thirty p.m. right here. Beyond that, we've also got, well, we're planning, V H B is planning to release a digital draft copy of the master plan as it stands by the end of this month, so that way folks can go on www.pembrokemasterplan.com and download the draft master plan, take a look at it, and that way they can kind of prepare their thoughts, comments, inputs, et cetera, to get ready for the public forum, which we're having another public forum on tentatively February twenty-ninth, so kind of symbolic leap year.
It's confirmed.
It is confirmed?
Yep.
Okay, so we do have it confirmed, February twenty-ninth at the library. So it'll be, the public, the public forum will be on February twenty-ninth.
Babysitting will be available.
Babysitting will be available?
Yes.
Excellent. And I will be doing an interview with Julie Thompson, PAC TV, on February sixth regarding the master plan, so we'll be discussing a number of issues around the Pembroke Master Plan, the process, and kind of what we thought about throughout our process, and how we've been going about everything, so I'm looking forward to that also. That's everything that I've got.
Excellent, thank you. Is there anything else under liaison updates? Hearing none, we'll move on to old or new business. Is there any this evening?
Maybe disqualified as opposed as new business, special election for open seat. Do, is there any?
For open seat?
For the open rep seat.
So I'll tell you the process and how it works is the, the person leaving the job needs to submit a resignation. As of the last time I looked, Josh Cutler has not tendered his resignation. We all know that he has been appointed to a, a new job, but until he tenders his official resignation, nothing can be done or changed. Once he does tender his resignation to the Speaker of the House, the Speaker of the House will then submit a bill to the House. The bill will go to a conference committee, and they generally suspend the rules to it to push it along, and then an irrevocable acceptance of the resignation will then be voted on in the House, and then the, then the Speaker of the House, that'll give the Speaker of the House the power to direct all the towns, select boards in the towns, to take a vote, to set the, the date that he will provide of the primary and the general election. So nothing can happen until Josh retires. He has not retired yet. Why he hasn't retired yet, I don't know. There are, sometimes there are personal reasons, sometimes politics gets involved, and they play with the calendar. I don't know. I don't know what the reason is.
Okay. I have one more old business question. Action tracker.
We've, we've been playing with it. I have updated it. I'll, I'll, we've been, need deep in budget stuff, but I'll, I'll actually present you to your next meeting, sir.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, sir. That's all I've got.
All right, very good. If there's nothing else under old or new business, I will put it out under scheduled appointments. We had a scheduled appointment with Pembroke Library Foundation for seven forty. I know, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, those are not hard numbers. They're not hearings, so you can...
But what I'm asking, I'm, I'm reaching out to the proponents. Is there anyone else that we're waiting for, and do, do you want to begin early?
Lawrence here, sir.
Lawrence here, too.
Okay, so, so it was scheduled for seven forty. We are taking it out of order. The Pembroke Library Foundation requests for a vote to accept a gift. Who's here to speak on the matter?
Three or four minutes. I'm Bossy Marzo, and if you know, President of the Pembroke Blacklight Foundation, and with me is Steve Perley, our treasurer. And the foundation is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. Foundation was founded about ten years ago as a result of a request of the Friends of the Pembroke Library and the Pembroke Library Trustees. The Friends, whose recent president is Tracy Marino, has done a great job supporting library needs. Most recently, they purchased new blinds and chairs for the large meeting room. The chairs and blinds are over twenty-five years old. The library roof is over twenty-six years old and needs replacement. The Friends and the foundation have worked hard because we realize how important a library is to a community, and our library is a jewel in our community center. Some people say libraries are obsolete. It's far from the truth. Our library is constantly evolving, and I have some hard numbers about the use of the library over the last eleven months, from January to the end of two thousand and twenty-three. That might surprise some of you folks. The number of books between adults, young adults, and children over that period of time was ninety-five thousand nine hundred sixty-six, eighty-one hundred dollars and more, not dollars, eighty-one hundred dollars, start again, Bob, eighty-one hundred books a month over that period of time. Downloads, people download online, thirty thousand fifty-five downloads. Online resource usage, ninety-two hundred fifty-one over those eleven months. Visitor count, eighty-one thousand nine hundred twenty-nine people over eleven months used the library. I don't know if that surprised any of you. Some people know it, some people don't. Tracy knows it. Adult programs, adult evening, youth events, I'll go through this quickly, I know you need to move on, and youth attendees, twelve thousand one hundred and eleven. That's a lot. Computer use, thirty-one hundred sixty-eight. Internet, twenty-nine, total of fifty-nine hundred twelve of the internet. Meeting room was used five hundred forty-three times during those eleven months. So we're here to ask the Board to accept a gift of an adaptive computer with headphones, adaptive keyboard, and a large screen monitor, along with new headphones for the children's room. The computer and equipment is for people who, for a variety of reasons, have a hard time using a computer. and equipment is for people who, for a variety of reasons, have a hard time using a computer. And this will, there's a demand for that at the library. The value of the gift is thirty-six hundred dollars. Two thousand and thirty-six hundred, we raised by a grant from the Triton Rotary, Rotary. I know people know about the spring and fall market at the flea market at the Marshfield Fairgrounds is the Rotary's major fundraiser. If you've never been there, you're missing something. It's really great. The remaining sixteen hundred is from the foundation's general funds, or from this guy over here. So I asked the board to slack me to vote to accept the gift.
Very good. Does the board have any questions? Is there any action to be taken?
I would move to accept the thirty-six hundred dollar donation from the Friends of the Pembroke Public Library.
Motion made seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support of the library. All right. Are there any announcements this evening?
I have one. I just wanted to remind us that Pembroke Resolves was rescheduled to Wednesday, January seventeenth at seven P.M. at First Church. Please attend.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, please, no. The weather's going to be perfect.
There is a, there is a forecast.
Yeah, exactly.
Is there really?
Yes, there is.
Shush.
I found it amusing. Can't help it.
What are you gonna do, winter?
Exactly, especially when it was also twenty-eight December.
All right, very good. Is there any community comment from the board this evening? Is there any community comment from the public this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on. I believe it's seven thirty. All the Board of Health members available for us? Yep, just come right up, because we have, we have a vote. Is there any other, well, just the two, that's why. We're gonna pick the third tonight, most likely.
Hello.
All right. So just let me say what's on, on air for, for the public. Joint appointment, the Board of Health, elected interim appointment to the vacancy, recommended Lauren Cushing. Adam, would you like to speak?
Um, we, me and Maureen voted in to appoint Lauren Cushing for the open seat on the Board of Health.
All right, very, very good. So we have a recommendation from the Board of Health, who conducted interviews. Does this board have any questions?
Uh, yes.
What made you decide to come to this appointment?
What do you mean?
Compared to all the candidates, why did you choose Lauren versus the, versus the candidates?
Lauren's been coming to our meetings for the past six months. She's shown interest. We need help with the livestock committee, and she's very knowledgeable, and she was just the better candidate, in my opinion.
I, I wanna appreciate, thank you to everyone who did send in, in application or submit, excuse me for putting my back to you line, to put their name in, to offer to serve on the board. It's greatly appreciated. And I didn't think we'd be able to have a choice, which is so kind and, and great. We felt as though, right now, with the vacancy on the board, since even I joined the board, one of the, on the agenda has always been the livestock agenda, to redo the regulations. So when I joined, it was in the process, and we're still trying to accomplish that. We have gone through several sections, but I think it would be wonderful if, if we could complete that, that, that agenda item. Lauren was a candidate who does have personal experience with livestock, and I thought that would be a really valuable experience that she could offer to share with us in making decisions and redoing the regulations. The other candidates were very strong as well, but just right now, you know, the campaign is in May, I thought we could maybe with this short time accomplish completing that goal. And so that was some thought behind my reasoning in recommending Lauren to fill the vacancy right now on the board. Thank you.
Very good. Are there any other questions? Hearing none. Adam, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Lauren Cushing for the open seat for the Board of Health.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. By rule call, I'll go to the Board of Health first. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
To the Select Board, John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I vote yes. There you have it. It's unanimous. I'll go with board.
Thank you, board.
The, the town clerk may still be in her office, so if you wanna get sworn in right now, you can get right to work.
Thank you very much.
She needs, she needs a letter.
Oh, she needs a letter? Well, I didn't wanna rush you off. Did you wanna say anything to the public?
No.
You couldn't be shy. You could be shy, that's fine, too. All right, thank you. All right, very good. So we've dispensed with all the items on the agenda, and I'll just list a lengthy list of upcoming issues. So January seventh, they hand over high school auditorium, they hand over fireworks public forum. January eighteenth at seven P.M., the Hanson Middle School Auditorium, the Hanson Fireworks Public Forum. January twenty-fourth at seven P.M., Becky Malamute, the North-South River Water Association review of results of the feasibility study. February fifth, annual town meeting warrant opens. February seventh, the treasurer collector vote to ban for the B.A.N. in tax possession property. February seventh at seven thirty, the town manager's FY twenty twenty-five budget presentation. February twelfth, special within the annual warrant opens. February sixteenth, all warrants close. April twenty-fourth, all final warrants assigned. April thirtieth, all warrants post. May fourteenth, the annual town meeting. May eighteenth, the annual town election. On May twenty-second, the reorganization of the board. Is there anything I missed this evening? Are there any other business? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, motion made seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Is anyone planning to attend tomorrow night?